Yeah, yeah, so there's one.
Have your attention please. Would I just ask this president and his team to go forward? Do we can ask some questions when they can answer them?
Here we go.
Here you go.
Anyone who has questions or concerns or level of concern, ask the question, voice it in person. And I believe this is why that he is now here and agreed to answer our questions and our concerns. Thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone.
Quiet, please.
Just after 6:30, we may have more people stroll in. We are we are very happy to see everyone here tonight. This meeting was our idea. There's no obligation for us to be here tonight. We're here because we know that there's a lot of community concerns around the project. We believe there's a lot of misinformation about the project and the risks. So we're here because we want to talk to you, we want to answer your questions, and we want to hear your concern. So with me tonight are a few members of my team, a few consultants that we have to support us in our emergency response, because we know that that's a particular area of concern. And we're a large group, so we appreciate that, you know, there are going to be a lot of questions, we're here to answer them. We just ask that everyone is polite, respectful, and we will look forward to a good discussion. So I think I just want to start by providing a bit of context for the project, and that's what we tried to do with the boards. And then, once I go through that context, give me five, 10 minutes, we're going to take the questions.
Can you just introduce all yourselves, so that we know who you are?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Ches is some of the president of Compass Greenfield Development, or the developer of the Northland Gary Best project.
My name is James Marzato, I'm the director of land acquisition and community engagement with Compass Greenfield Development.
My name is Elijah Garrett, I'm one of the project managers with Compass Greenfield here.
Name Scott Gerillo, director of engineering and asset management for Compass Greenfield.
My name's Logan Barrett, I'm the president of Antler Group. We're a chemical response and disaster management contractor based in the Branford, Ontario.
I'm Ryan Wheeler, sheer water environmental emergency solutions, I'm an emergency management consultant.
So that's our team here tonight, and again, we're here to answer question three. We'll be here for the next couple of hours. So this project came to be because there was a call for power in the province. The province is going through a period of growing power demand, and they're looking specifically for resources that can meet power on demand. So that means not necessarily new generation, but resources that can meet demand on a short notice, and that can provide power when it's needed the most during the day. There was really two types of resources that participated in this procurement. This is the long-term one procurement that we got this contract under, battery energy storage and natural gas generation. Battery energy storage, people, I think, should understand, we're not generating any power with this project. We're taking power from the grid during low-demand periods, and we're putting it back on the grid during a high-demand period. So there's no generation happening, there's no solar, there's no wind, there's no any relation or any support of that. We located close to the transformer station because it's strategic in terms of access to the electrical capacity that exists at St. Isidore Station. So, again, a provincial call for power, looking for either battery energy storage or natural gas generation. This was one of several projects that was awarded. Our company was one of the 45 companies that was qualified across the province to participate in these procurements. And that allowed us to bid the project, and it was a competitive process, and our contract was selective. So that's the genesis for why we came to develop this project. Part of the project, and I know there's questions around this, so I'm going to try and talk about it, and I'm happy to answer more questions, I know there's some frustration around it specifically. Part of the requirements of the project were to communicate with neighbors, direct neighbors. We did send notifications with Express Post to direct neighbors, and some direct neighbors beyond south of, or south of the 417. In addition to that, we did send regular mail to about 1 km radius, so a slightly broader scope of people related to the project. This is something that we did in October of '23, prior to having a community meeting in Donebygan. In advance of that, we did go present to council on September '23, and following our meeting in October '23, we went to council to request a council support resolution. So that was all, I mean, it's public record, right? Everything that happened at council is public record. So that was part of the process in advance of bidding a project, and that bid went in in December or January of the following year, and the project was awarded. With respect to the municipal zoning process, that's totally municipal process, we don't control that, and we didn't have any influence on it whatsoever. So that's us, that's why the project is here. We know, in terms of the technology, it's lithium-ion batteries. The battery chemistry is lithium-ion phosphate, which is a battery chemistry that is slightly newer and less prone to accidents. As part of our projects, there is many layers that we put into ensuring safety with the projects. It starts off with battery technology and battery chemistry, and so that's why using this battery chemistry is less prone to accidents. And accidents are quite rare, I know that there's people who've mentioned to me that accidents happen, but accidents are quite rare. These systems are monitored for temperature, for smoke, for gas, on a 24/7 basis. So if there's ever an issue identified, a rise in temperature, or a rise in gas level, or smoke, the system shuts down. And I can tell you that in our commissioning, we were commissioning our projects, because we got some awards, some contracts, in the expedited long-term one, which happened a year before this project. And those projects are essentially finished completion, construction in Windsor. And during our testing, the projects automatically shut down because there was something tripped in the transformer. So these things are remotely controlled, remotely monitored, 24/7. In addition to that, the batteries themselves have to meet specific standards that are required and focused on a standard or a stationary battery storage system. The standards are developed by UL, and they've advanced dramatically because there have been accidents in the past. That's why these batteries are, of course, always kept outside, nothing indoors. And in addition to, they get tested for fire at multiple levels. Within the battery, there's what's called battery cells, which is the smallest unit. Then they're put together in modules, and then those modules are interconnected. And the tests that are specified by UL, by Underwriters Laboratory, test the batteries for temperature and for what's called fire propagation, so fire spreading from cell to cell or module to module. And it's tested at both the cell level and the module level, before it gets approved. And again, there's sensors at all those levels to monitor how the temperature is changing in the battery. Beyond that, we do engage with the fire department to make sure that they are both trained on how to address a thermal event, if it were ever to happen, but also they have the equipment that they need. And we pay for both the training and the equipment, should it ever be required to be used. And that's something that we've done in Windsor, it's something we're doing in Almont, and it's something that we're going to be doing here as well. That's the safety. I think I'm going to pause there, and we're going to start to take questions. I'm going to ask James to keep track of who's first and second in the queue to questions, okay?
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Because it's probably going to be a lot, and that's great. Again, we're here because this meeting was our idea. We wanted to talk to you, we did not want to hide, and that's absolutely not our objective, right? I mean, we were going to be here in the community for a long time. We want to try and be good neighbors, and, you know, we think communication is an important part of that.
Could you outline for us, just to get started, all of the events and problems that have occurred in this region with regard to power? That this is going to solve?
So the battery supply is more on a provincial level? Or rather, the power demand is more at provincial level? I'm not sure that there's a local, regional need, but I I know that actually, I know in the Ottawa area, the Ottawa region, it is a growing area for new demand action. So where we are here sits in the, electrically speaking, sits in the Ottawa region as defined by the provincial authority.
So there's no specific benefit for this region then?
Sorry, so St. Isidore Station that we're connecting into is considered electrically part of the Ottawa area, and Ottawa actually is going through a period of growth in demand.
But no problem, to be resolved. I mean, this isn't going to answer growth, this only answers short term.
Well, so by providing power on demand, it does address growth in demand.
But the target is Ottawa.
Sorry, so the target is provincial-wide. The power, like electricity flows throughout the grid, there are sort of pitch points or where there's more need, but I know specifically Ottawa, as an electrical region, you know, speaking, is growing a lot.
So why wasn't this tested at the substation in Ottawa, instead of here? Why wasn't it tested directly in Ottawa, on Ottawa's power source and demand? Locally, as Orleans, you said Almont, which is fine, but why wasn't it tested off of Hawthorne, at the substation, off the major line? Not to mention there's one other one in Kanata. So you chose to come all the way out to St. Isidore, instead of testing directly in Ottawa for Ottawa's growth?
Sorry, folks, let me maybe clarify something. Yes, so there's a provincial growth in demand. When the question was, is there a local need? Electrically, there is a need within the Ottawa area, but that's not necessarily why we located here. We located here because there's capacity on that line that connects to the St. Isidore TS. And the site was in close proximity, and was also adjacent to a highway. So that's why we landed at that particular location.
But can you bring up constant instances in this where this exact region has actually needed that system? When that substation and the substation adjacent to St. Isidore has failed us? Other than being down for maintenance?
So maybe to be clear, it's not battery backup? So the intent is, as we talk about future growth?
No, but what I'm saying is, I understand the growth aspect, that's fine. And I understand it's a battery. But when has this area and its infrastructure ever failed us? Or the demand and the input demand, and like the actual on-demand? When has that substation ever let us down?
So again, the growth over time on the grid generally. So over the day, the power demand in the province changes. So overnight, it's quite low.
But we're local.
Everybody comes home at 5 o'clock, you can turn on dishwashers and cook dinner.
Correct, but how is that affect us?
It's all one grid.
Well, it's not one grid, you're hooking it up and then feeding it back into St. Isidore's grid, correct?
We're just connected to the transmission system, in a certain way.
Correct, but when has that ever failed us locally? As you're trying to test major city development and growth, why aren't you in a major city or development? Is that because there's been failures in your system? Is because it's inferior and you can't put it inside city limits, because it might burn down?
Exactly.
We have.
Can you not put it in several city locations because it's going to burn down and cause problems?
Well, we have.
We built one in Windsor.
No, we're talking specifically Ottawa. That was my question, and that's what I stated, not Windsor.
We built one in Windsor, it's about to turn on. We can build them in cities, yes, but we built them strategically based off of electrical capacity on the grid. There was a need, there was an availability to put it here. It's next to a highway, and it has available grid capacity, that's why we're here.
So the 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 homes that are going to be built in Ottawa in the next five, six years?
I don't mean to make that association, that's not what I meant. The need is.
Well, we need to be clear, right? We're at a meeting here for this specific thing that you chose to help. So misinterpretation really isn't the best way to act on this. So where are you provincially looking to supply power?
So electricity flows across the grid.
We know that, yes.
We don't know where it's going to go. We only know that when we get called to provide power, we provide.
But you were denied test beds in Ottawa directly, right?
We were denied test beds in Ottawa, no, that's not accurate.
So you're in St. Isidore because
there's capacity on this specific transformer station?
By capacity, you mean there's a surplus that could be generated and harvested here, and it can't be harvested in Ottawa, because there's always that maximum capacity?
Well, so the limitation is in the transformer itself, so in the Hydro One infrastructure. Each transformer can only hold a certain amount of capacity. And so anywhere in the province, there's many transformers that are at capacity that can't handle extra generation, or, it's not generation, but backfeeding power into the system when the batteries are on. And there are some that can. And St. Isidore TS has capacity, as do many across the province. And those are where these developments are happening, where there is additional capacity on those transformers.
And to add, just to add one point, just to add one point. So these procurements, ELT1, LT1, further procurements, so this project is less than 20 megawatts? The procurements total in the thousands of megawatts. So this project isn't just going in St. Isidore. Our competitors, other developers in the province, they're developing projects from Windsor, as mentioned, all the way to Ottawa, up to North Bay, you'll see these projects. And again, to reinforce that energy need, the ISO, and even taking another step back, has reported that a 75% increase in energy is needed by 2050. So this is contributing to that provincial need that we all rely on.
Everything you're saying says we need more generating capacity, not batteries.
Well, so we are doing generation as well elsewhere.
Well, generation is different.
So this is a good point, and this is what we're trying to address. So with the time and the consumption over time, we've talked about 5 o'clock, there being extra load on the grid, if we're considering that that period of time is only maybe a couple of hours, because we need to add, as a province, we need to add additional capacity and generation pretty fast. It takes a long time to build new gas plants, and it takes a long time to build nuclear, as we see. However, batteries go up pretty quickly. So what we can do is we can charge up at night, when there's lots of available power, and during that couple of hours, we can ride through. And it's relatively inexpensive, as opposed to buying, building new generation.
Sorry, we're going to take this.
What happens in the end of life?
Sorry.
With these batteries, what happens at the end of life?
I know there's a lot of questions. Yeah, we're going to take this woman in blue, and then we're going to get to the gentleman at the back, and then we're going to get to you.
May I just say one thing? To have order for your meeting and not to have any problems, that you've got voices coming from you at different ways, why don't we all just pick a corner here, where we would line up, one behind the other, and then the first one takes his question, when his question is answered, he moves on. The next one gets a chance. Then, if that person wants another question, let him line up at the back of the line again, and he'll get to put in another question. May I suggest that to you gentlemen?
Good idea.
Just to make it easier for you, okay? Thank you.
This test, smoked, like there's no way you can get them out. And that is another question, who's going to pay all that? There's no written letter, nothing. My insurance doesn't pay. It's not fun when you have so many animals, and you're trying to get them out of the barn, like they're not going to cooperate. And about the sensor thing, don't tell me anything about sensors. I have a lot of sensors at home, and I know how many times they break. It's some brand-new practice, it's on belt conveyor, everywhere. They break all the time, you need somebody over there. So can you ask me a few questions? Like, did you build one?
Yeah. So, you know, thermal events, they are extremely rare.
You define rare?
Yeah. Don't have a percentage of hours, I don't have a percentage of hours.
How many of your sales?
Well, the projects we're building are our first, so we don't have any other fail.
Great, catch that.
I've built 35.
I've built 35 in the province for different companies. We haven't had failures.
You guys are experts, eh? You're experts. With little information.
I've built 35 in my career, over the last, since 2018.
How many have failed?
And how many of the 35 failed?
So we're talking? None.
And I don't think that there's been batteries with storage bad for 35 years.
No, 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 35 projects in total since 2018. So the majority of these are behind the meter, in industrial, commercial facilities. They're the same kind of technology.
Generators.
No, 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 not generators, no, these are the same things. These are like battery stacks.
Lithium-ion battery projects. They've been in procurement in Ontario since 2015.
There's a lot out there.
So they've existed here for over 10 years.
So I won't need a mic, as you know, just with my army voice. If there is a power grid failure beyond four hours, the best facility must be kept cool by a gasoline, diesel, natural gas, or propane powered. Get this. The generator has to be powered by gasoline, diesel, natural gas, or propane. Now let that sink in. Where's the environmental impact of using that according to environmentalists?
I'm sorry, sir.
Let me finish, please. If the power grid failure goes beyond 10 hours, which has historically happened many times in our area in the past, how is cooling provided to the best facility when no more fuel is available, which will then cause overheating and the lithium batteries to explode and burn? Now let that sink in. The grid can neither receive from nor send any power or to and from the best when the power grid goes down. The best becomes useless, in my perception, as someone with a lot of engineering knowledge. Now let that sink in. A best can still go into a catastrophic thermal runaway even after it is discharged, if it is not adequately cooled. For example, the container in the Port of Montreal Racine Terminal on September 23, 2004. It was just sitting there in the terminal. And you've got runaway, fire. Now, yes, it's just a container. Now, how many containers do we have here, 20, 22?
There'd be 20 batteries.
20 batteries. Only one needs to blow up to screw things up. The rest won't blow up or burn, I understand that. But all it takes is one to ruin this area environmentally, and that is a major concern. So how do you plan to cool the Northland Gary best in the event of, say, a 10-hour-long system-wide grid blackout, when no power can provide cooling, when no fuel can be obtained for backup generators to the cooling system, because all the fuel suppliers can't do it, there's nothing to power their pumps? There's nothing to power their pumps.
Can I take that? Yeah, I can take that. So your cellphone is a lithium-ion battery? How do you keep it cool, disconnect the power? You did answer that.
And they still catch fire, by the way.
But how do you keep it?
Why are you using vanadium flow batteries? They don't open it, they don't break down, they don't require any maintenance, they last 25 years, as opposed to seven. Why are you using vanadium flow batteries?
How many, I'm not aware of any commercially viable.
So, yeah, so listen, there's lots of people here, we're going to ask you if you have a comment or questions.
Do you know why I answered my question, Ryan?
We're going to ask you to stand in line with the other people.
Why are you using vanadium flow batteries, they're much safer.
Because they are not commercially financeable. That's why, because they're not commercially financeable. They are not commercially financeable, vanadium flow batteries.
Sir, can you keep to the point and answer the question just asked by the previous gentleman?
Yes. So the batteries do not rely on any third-party energy source to keep them cool. They rely on the power in the battery to keep them cool. When the batteries were shipped to us, when they're shipped, they maintain enough energy to maintain their systems for six months. That's the window that the manufacturer sends the batteries with. They send it charged with enough energy to keep the batteries reporting to Tesla. We're using Tesla batteries, which I know is.
Nice.
We made this.
We made it a year ago.
So the batteries were shipped to our, get shipped with enough energy to store for six months during the construction period, right? So if there is an outage for 10 hours, for 15 hours, for two days, the batteries have enough stored energy to maintain their HVAC systems, to keep the batteries cool, and to continue communicating. We're not relying on grid power to maintain communication with the batteries.
And furthermore, the batteries only heat up when they're being used. Similar to if you, again, it is lithium-ion battery in your cellphone. Yeah, absolutely. So similar to your cellphone, if you're on your cellphone for a long time, you can hear the battery, you can feel the battery warm up. That's because heat comes out of the battery when it's used. So when it's charging or discharging, that is when it gets a little bit warmer. If it's sitting idle, it doesn't warm up by itself.
Next question, sir, please. Make sure the crowd can hear you.
Thank you. While batteries are portrayed as environmentally friendly, nothing could be further from the truth. Lithium-ion-based batteries used in best systems rely on a mix of minerals and materials that require massive amounts of energy to mine, transport, process, and refine. It takes far more energy than the extraction and the transport of oil and natural gas. Even the CBC has pointed out that making batteries results in significant greenhouse gas emissions. About 58% of the world's lithium reserves are found in the Lithium Triangle in Chile. In order to get one pound of pure lithium, 1,000 pounds of lithium brine must be processed. So native peoples in the Lithium Triangle face contaminated rivers that are essential for human consumption, livestock watering, and irrigation systems. And mountains of discarded salt from brine, lithium brine processes are left behind as a result. A lot of these problems is due to the fact that much of the lithium processing in Chile is controlled by China, which has a very poor environmental and human rights record, as we know. Even though China holds less than 7% of world's lithium reserves, it controls about 80% of global lithium chemical production. This includes refining lithium into battery-grade materials used in bests. And what about water? Do you realize 1 million liters of water is needed to produce 1 ton of lithium? And Chile's, someday, at the Karma, lithium and iron mining activities consume 65% of the region's water. That is having a big impact on local farmers in one of the driest desert regions on earth. And farmers that grow chinoa and herd llamas. So some of these communities must now get water transported in from elsewhere as a consequence. So my question to you is, where is this lithium that you plan to use in your best project mined and processed? And what guarantees can you give us that you are not causing massive environmental harm in the course of the production of your batteries? Thank you.
Good question.
That's a valid question, I'm not certain. Unfortunately, we don't have an answer. So the simple answer from our perspective is we don't trace the source of the lithium that goes into the batteries that we're using.
How are you meeting your 20th and the targets if you're not tracking your supplies that have that kind of go-in path?
Sorry.
We have to be accountable to our targets.
You have to get into line.
Yeah, sorry, we're going to ask you to join the folks that are waiting.
It was a two-to-the-first conversation, it's not a new question. It has to do with the first question on the table. How are you going to account for that? The United Nations wouldn't do, it's not accounted for for us.
So we don't have answers for the question that was asked, because we don't track that.
We're on credits. You are tracking it, you have to.
We actually, our credits are not part of our business, but we do we do know that battery energy storage is offsetting natural gas generation. And as I mentioned at the start, the two types of technologies that we're competing for providing capacity is natural gas generation and battery energy storage. So
So in, so the batteries take power at low demand periods in Ontario. That's traditionally nuclear and hydro power providing the power overnight. And it stores it for use the next day. So the next day, when it's discharging, it's discharging electricity of the generator from nuclear and hydro. As compared to the natural gas generator, it's going to be burning natural gas to generate electricity. So not, I'm not answering the questions. I don't have the answer for the question that was just asked.
Where do you source your batteries?
Battery energy storage does reduce carbon emissions relative to the alternative technology that was used.
As we mentioned before, we are sourcing from Tesla, a decision that was made many months ago, prior to, call it, early two thousand and five. I can't speak for Tesla right now, and I don't have the exact source confirmed. But typically, a corporation like Tesla in their annual corporate social responsibility reports, which is fair for a multinational public company like Tesla, they do make public. So we can try to look into it ourselves, but that is, for your own benefit and knowledge, that is a good place to start from that public source. Is there, typically, their annual, so it will be in twenty-twenty-four by now, is there a corporate social responsibility report that follows a global standard that most, if not all, public, certainly publicly traded corporations will follow?
Can I do just one follow-up? Just regarding your Tesla project as well. I'm from Austria, and I know of fact that cars had, cars had caught fires there. And there was one company specifically that was commissioned and the entire country of Austria would be responsible to collect these burning fires or batteries and be decommissioned. So when they collected these, that battery from the car that was burning for days along the highway, they were then contacting Tesla again to find out what are the contents of this battery so that probably can decommission these batteries. And the answer was, we won't tell you because this is a proprietary information. We don't need to know that. And they left him by that.
Wow.
That was, yeah, that's the thing we see from Tesla, just to keep you updated.
Battery energy storage system best presents a significant economic, environmental, and reliability challenges for Ontario. They require substantial conventional power to maintain optimal temperatures, yet can only store and discharge up to four hours of electricity, far less than needed during peak demand. For instance, replacing three days of natural gas at two hundred and fifty thousand megawatts with best would cost approximately six hundred billion dollars, doubling the electricity costs for ratepayers. Tin and solar are unreliable, producing twenty-nine to thirty percent of their capacity on average and less than fifteen percent in the summer when demand peaks. Additionally, manufacturing lithium-ion batteries generates more emissions than they save, especially since most are produced in China using coal power. Best facilities pose health and environmental risks from lithium mining's water depletion in South America to high emissions from shipping and production. They also fail to meet long-term energy storage needs as lithium-ion batteries lose up to fifty percent of stored energy when discharged. Unlike hydro storage, which can naturally balance supply, best requires costly HVAC systems and remains ineffective in extreme temperatures. Furthermore, subsidies mask their true cost. Without government support, this industry would collapse. Alberta's near-blackout in twenty-twenty-four demonstrated best unreliability, supplying only ten minutes of backup power before requiring coal imports. Decommissioning best adds another financial burden, with lithium-ion systems costing between fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars per kilowatt hour to dismantle and recycle. Despite plans of reducing emissions, the full lifecycle of best from manufacturing to disposal increases carbon output. With renewable dependent on unreliable storage, Ontario's electricity costs have already doubled. Until a breakthrough in long-term storage occur, best remains an impractical solution, diverting prime agricultural land for industrial use while failing to deliver affordable, reliable, and truly green energy. What is your plan for future installations in North Glengarry besides the best of north of Dunvegan? Please give us your full roadmap for twenty-twenty to twenty-forty. Thank you.
So that was a lot of information. I just want to just counter one thing, and then I'll answer your question. This was a competitive procurement. There's zero incentives that we're receiving. It's part of our project. The only project revenues we get are sold by contract, which was a competitive bidding. We bid against natural gas generation, and natural gas generation is more expensive. And it's all top of record. You can download the values and the costs from natural gas generation. So I just want to make that point clear to everyone. It's on the ISA website. You can post a link to on our website so you guys can see the costs that were paid to natural gas generation versus battery energy storage, which was a four-hour need, and that was the need that was put out by the procurement authority. So we're meeting a four-hour demand because that was the requirement of the procurement. So I just want to make that point clear, is that we're not getting a subsidy, and they're cheaper than an alternative. Okay? With respect to our plans, we have none. We have no plans for developing additional projects in this area. The only, the only project we have in this area is the one that's connected or that's going to be done across the same sort of transformation, and that's it.
The next question, please.
Hi, my name is Larissa Douglas. I am a tech blogger. I've covered the impact of technology on pre-existing systems for the past fifteen years. And so I have a question about cybersecurity and national security. So I have here a document from within your own industry, from the best industry. It was produced in May of twenty-twenty-four by the Electric Power Research Institute. Welcome to look at it. I'm sure you've seen it already. I will hand it to the audience. You guys can look at it. Pass around. Yeah. Has a lot of information, and it says, one of the things it says is that when bests do fail, they mostly fail within the first three years. And they fail either during the construction phase due to the wiring and the HVAC subsystems or the fire suppression problems, or once they're constructed, they fail due to operations and controls. And so with this in mind, I did a bit of digging, and I found that there's a Canadian Parliamentary Committee report on critical infrastructure and foreign interference. And we see here in this Canadian Parliamentary Report from twenty-twenty-three specifically made, namely that operations and controls of critical electrical infrastructure could be affected by installed cyber backdoors, which make them hackable, basically. So the main thing is that the Chinese government has an internal law. It's called the National Intelligence Law or the Counter Espionage Law to compel Chinese vendors who are making these batteries to similarly modify, and I'm quoting the Parliamentary Committee Report right now, "to similarly modify products which are produced or manufactured in China before being delivered to foreign customers." So even if you're relying on Tesla, there's still components potentially that are coming from China. Now, this concern was reiterated by the Canadian Centre for Cybersecurity in October of twenty-twenty-four. And they reported that state-sponsored actors from the People's Republic of China have been scanning Canadian systems, including critical infrastructure, highlighting potential vulnerabilities in sectors like energy storage. So then, on top of this, we have actual examples of this from Texas. So in the summer of twenty-eighteen, the US government seized transformers with Chinese secret backdoors in Houston. And also twenty-twenty-four, the US House of Representatives forced a best to be disconnected at Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Base in North Carolina, because it had a backdoor built into it that could be hacked. So as we see from this, there is potentially a difference between ticking the boxes for risk assessment for urban planning versus ticking the boxes for national security planning. And I also have a US military assessment here, which expects that the window of opportunity for open conflict with China starts in twenty-twenty-seven, which is exactly when all these things are coming online in a ring around our capital city. And so, you know, I understand what you're talking about in terms of urban planning. I understand. And I understand what you're talking about. Of course, the demand, increased demand for power is coming from the rise of artificial intelligence. But the problem is that we need to know what your full roadmap is for national security and cybersecurity risk and your plan to mitigate those risks. Like, for example, do you have AI that is superior to current Chinese AI to be even able to detect this security risk? And how can you feel confident to build anything before you account for these risks? So that's my question.
So I'll say that what we can do. So I'll say that what we can do is we can build into the standards that we have. So the IESO, who is the grid operator that's responsible for controlling all the generation in Ontario, will also follow standards from the US, from the Federal Energy Liability Council, or again. There are specific cybersecurity standards that we must follow. But I also wanted to draw attention, I think, the worst-case scenario here. This is a pretty small battery system as far as this battery system goes. The worst-case scenario might be that it fails to operate, which isn't a safety risk. It's not good for us because we're not generating revenue from it. But if it fails to operate, that doesn't present much of a risk to the community.
Although we know that they can be remote-controlled.
They are.
No. We know they can be remote-controlled by hostile actors. So we know that, for example, you can try to shut it off, and basically you won't be able to because it will be remotely controlled, and you won't be able to. It'll be controlled by somebody else. So the point is, like, even the Canadian Parliamentary Report on this stated that an additional security assessment has to be done because we're analyzing these things from a peacetime perspective. We're not imagining that there could be any kind of conflict in the next twenty years. So the problem is, unless you can do that kind of robust national security level, cybersecurity level assessment, which is like an ongoing debate within your own industry, you know, you can't build until you tick that box because of, I don't know where the. No, but the graph with the window of opportunity. But the window of opportunity for Chinese aggression starts in twenty-twenty-seven. And this is not me saying this. This is assessment of the demographic of that country and, you know, the age of their leader and the readiness of their military and the likelihood of what could happen. So we're so used to peacetime, we can't imagine what could happen to these, you know, this grid. And so it's building a potential vulnerability right into our grid in between two of the most important cities in our country.
And PTC infiltration into the government, anyhow. Or I should say the Chinese party infiltration. That's a concern because that suggests.
It's an ongoing.
So I will say that the grid operator, the IESO, is the entity that tells us when to charge and when to discharge, same as they can control Darlington and all the gas plants. And we follow their lead on what they require us to do. So they're responsible for maintaining the safe grid. And any standards or any requirements that they have for us to communicate with them, we have to follow. If that changes in time, it's our fault.
Right, but can you provide, for example, the inquiries, specific inquiries that you're going to make to them as a regulatory body regarding something like this, considering our strategic position between Ottawa and Montreal, right next to the four-seventeen, which is a major conduit? If there's, if something goes wrong in Ottawa or Montreal in a conflict situation, those people come into this area. And if for some reason the water table is damaged or the soil is damaged, we can't help those people. If the grid is down in the middle of winter, in the middle of night, in a conflict situation, we're not going to be able to help ourselves, much less help those people. So we're not trying to be rude or anything, but it's a really serious, real issue that exists above and beyond the world of green energy and building up the grid, right?
The grid, this is connected to the grid. And whatever standards they have, as a vulnerable, I mean, we're subject to making sure that our cybersecurity is at the same level as all the other.
Yeah, but I mean, you have to, in a sense, I would say, produce a report that shows that you've done due diligence on this particular issue. Let's say, potentially beyond your basic regulators' concerns. Because anything, under these circumstances, anything could happen very quickly.
If we weren't able, if we didn't follow the standards that were issued to us, so.
Yes, I understand. Anyway, I'll leave it there.
My question for you gentlemen, I'm sure you have a fine company. What guarantees do we have that three months after it starts working, some third party buys you guys out? And all your happy faces are no longer responsible for what's been installed? What stops this from happening?
I'm sure everyone heard the question, but.
Everybody heard the question, right?
Ah, we did.
These guys can start this business off, and nice guys. Three months later, it all gets sold to a third party, who knows where? The third party that is responsible for security, fire, operations, right? So these guys are gone. Somebody else, we don't know. We've never met, ever talked to. They're running the scene. Now you think, call this gentleman to find out what's going on with that generator. They're no longer there, and the company you're going to call? South Asia, Brazil, someplace in the UK, right?
So we collectively, different spots, been working in the sector since two thousand and seven myself, being an energy developer since the start of twenty-seventeen. We have a few other operating assets. We're in the process of trying to develop more projects in Ontario and in other parts of Canada. It's not in our business plan to sell the projects.
It never starts out that way, does it?
So, I mean, I, you know, I'm not good at the speculation game. So I, you know, we have no intention to sell a project. That's what I can assure you here today.
But is there a regulatory body that says you have to go to committee before you sell?
There's no regulatory body, except, sorry, it's the contract counterparty, so that's the government agency, IESO. The buyer has to be competent, otherwise they don't allow the change of control. So it's not that you just go to anybody. It has to be somebody with experience that can continue to meet the requirements. And I think the point that Scott made is a point that applies not just to the operation of the battery, the environmental commitments, as well as the contracts we have with the landlord, with, without, with the Hydro One, the grid operator. And, yeah, well, he is a contract, but the point is our standards, like, whoever is in his chair, which is more than likely going to be us, but whoever's in his chair has to meet those standards, right? It's not like they have any lower paths at the cybersecurity requirements if they come in.
You know, that goes the lowest tender. So I, like, I'd hate to see something like this get farmed out the lowest tender. Because it could.
That's what it is.
And that's what I think a lot of people in this room are worried about.
Well, so, you know, we're a Canadian company. We're Ontario-based. We are here because we want to be, you know, present and not try and hide in any way. We're using utility contractors. We're trying to solve equipment. Everything is sort of tier-one. And our plan is to ensure that there's better communication, because clearly there was a communication problem, and commit to, you know, the highest safety standards, right? I mean, and we think.
And like I said, it's not you I'm concerned about. You have a very nice platform, great gentleman, you know, doing the thing. It's for me, it gets soaked. And then where do we stand? Wow, you guys came down here, we get to talk to you. But those people who buy you, they won't come down.